Let's go ahead and get started then. I'll open up this meeting, this March meeting of the Escondido Library Board of Trustees. The first business is any oral communications, Zach?
None.
Oh, see, I remembered that one. I did it. Next is the approval of the minutes from last meeting. Okay, Ron, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, great. John, second. All in favor of approving minutes? Great. All right. Virginia, did you want to give an update?
Sure. So we have our National Library Week coming up, April 3rd through the 9th, and it's our chance to celebrate our library, library workers' contributions, and promote library use and support. So I sent you all an email letting you know about that time. And I, is Joanna joining us today?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so I can follow up with her separately. But I was wondering, Katie, how we can help build awareness around our library and appreciating our library's workers. So I would like to ask the board their thoughts and anything that they would like to contribute as far as ideas over that week. But first, we should hear about history, what the library normally does, and if you guys had already had plans this year.
Thank you very much for considering helping us promote National Library Week. I've been here for just about five years, I think, and in the very beginning, when I started, we would have a campaign during, I think we did it for, either for the week or we kind of rolled it in sometimes because of February is Love Your Library Month. Like, a lot of times you would combine things. There's usually, we just do targeted marketing. So we'll do a social media campaign where we'll ask people to respond with like, what do you love about your library? We've done boards, like in the library, where there's like little hearts. People can write their favorite part about the library, and then we'll usually feature those on social media as well. I believe in the past, we've done like raffles for people when they've turned those in and like, we'll do fun prizes. Again, it's been kind of different from year to year. We haven't, as far as I've been here, it's hard to remember past the last two years. But I do remember in the beginning, we would do some targeted marketing. I just want to give you a heads up. So we have kind of, as you know, with 2022, we've kind of come back into starting to reconvene, reimagine, look at what we're doing. Our graphics and marketing coordinator is definitely interested in kind of re-implementing some of these campaigns. However, as far as like, we're kind of just coming into it. So our first big one's going to be summer reading, since it's in person this year. And then we're going to be looking at banned books week in September. And we sometimes do things for Library Card Sign Up Month, which is September, but it's usually because banned books and Library Card Sign Up are in a similar timeframe. We usually pick one or the other to focus on, and just because of how crazy the last two years are, I told him, let's roll into it slowly. So I know this year, we're doing banned books. I think we might look at doing something for September for National Library Card Sign Up Month. And then we'll probably create a calendar later in the year to look at our marketing efforts for 2023. So the long, the long answer, obviously, is that we don't have anything specific planned for National Library Week this year because we're just now kind of coming back into that. And historically, it's been more marketing focused and just getting patron involvement and not so much anything. We, like, I think in the past, we've had like donuts for staff or something like that. That's just done by admin. But as far as I've been told or know, we're not really, this is kind of overlapping with when our volunteer luncheon is too. So we're going to be focused on getting that because it's like Volunteer Appreciation Week is like right up against it, so.
When is the volunteer luncheon?
It is on April 12th. You all should have received an email invite this morning at 10:00 a.m. If you did not receive one, let me know. You should have, so, yeah. So that's for all you guys.
Okay, so it sounds like to me, from your point of, from the library's point of view, we are going to be a little bit light on public outreach as far as coming from the library. But I would still like to know if it's a good idea to celebrate the staff as much as possible. And that was one of the ideas that was circulated is to see if local restaurants would like to sponsor like breakfast or lunch for the staff, and I'm happy to help coordinate, you know, that so it's not more work on you guys. But I was wondering, how many employees?
We currently have 29 employees. Well, we currently have 30, but we do have, one of our librarians, her last day will be next Friday. So prior to this, we'll have 30, but we'll have 29 at the time of this week. And I would appreciate that. That would be great if you would coordinate that. The staff would really appreciate that. Yeah, I think that's awesome. Anything you guys can do, I mean, I know you're really good supporters already, just being trustees, but for us, it's about getting the word out, you know, on your own social media, in your own daily life of just like supporting their library or libraries in general. And I mean, that all helps us as far as that goes.
One of the things that I will follow up with Joanna on, and she put us in touch with the digital marketing person for this.
Yeah, Mike.
And even if they could just encourage, you know, the city of Escondido to visit the library during that time to thank the librarian in person, I think that would suffice for the social media part of it. But now I'll call on each board trustee to see if they had any ideas or what, if any participation. Go ahead.
Okay, I noticed on the luncheon invitation that I did get at 10 o'clock this morning, it mentioned door prizes or something like that. That's for just any participant to the luncheon, so the donation of a door prize doesn't necessarily help show our appreciation for staff.
No, those are prizes we supply to honor our volunteers. So unless you want to donate a prize for yourself and your colleagues, I mean, we're not going to say no, but yeah, we usually have those prizes as a way to honor all of you and our other wonderful support volunteers. But I appreciate that. But yeah, we were, we do that so everyone who comes to the luncheon will get a raffle ticket, and then we'll do raffle prizes at the end.
Okay, and not everybody works every day of the 29. So if we got food at any one time, what's the best way to do that? To have two separate things or what?
I'd have to talk to staff and our management staff. I mean, I know we've got a couple of days of the week where we're a lot heavier on staffing. So I think like if you picked a day like a Tuesday or a Thursday where we usually have all hands on deck, if you did something in the morning and then something in the afternoon, you'd hit everybody pretty much. There might be one or two folks that would miss, but the majority of our staff would get it.
Okay, so Tuesday or Thursday and both in a morning and an afternoon thing?
Yeah, if you wanted to catch like all of the staff at one point or another, I think that would probably be the best bet. Like, probably I'd say like a Tuesday. Tuesday seems to be our busiest day for everything.
Okay, then. Good to know.
Thank you.
Okay, Merrick, did you have any ideas or want to share anything?
I think just to have a campaign to promote, for everybody to visit the library in person that week is a great idea. And so we should do it on our own social media accounts and the city should promote that. So, but that's a very good idea. Excellent.
Yeah, and we can have Mike Thorne, who's the city guy, once he creates that. You guys can then just share it if you like, instead of creating your own, if you wanted to do that.
Thing regarding the luncheon, so that's only April 29th. So we're going to discuss it in details in the next meeting?
It's April 12th.
Okay.
It's April 12th.
April 12th?
Yeah, it's just the volunteer luncheon. So the volunteer luncheon is on April 12th. It'll be held at the library. I believe it's from 11:00 to 1:00. It's a Tuesday. And we're just, we're having a luncheon to celebrate all of our volunteers. So all of you who are trustees, your volunteers, all of our friends at the library, all of our other support groups, all of our other volunteers who help at the library. It's just a way to honor and appreciate all of the work that you all do.
Is it going to be in a similar format as in previous years, lunch being served and the prizes?
It will be, it'll be much more intimate. So we're doing it at the library instead of at the Cultural Arts Center. And we're getting it catered, so, and it'll probably, it's going to be a little simpler. But yes, it'll be a thank you and then lunch and then door prizes.
And who's paying for lunch?
We've gotten some donations to pay for it. Yeah.
Carolyn? I don't, I don't have any other ideas other than what you mentioned. I think that's great. I can help run food if we need, if we need to, so, you know, if I need to pick anything up and take it to the library, I can definitely help. Ron?
Well, the volunteer luncheon is something I'm very familiar with. And, you know, the volunteers are the lifeblood of this library. It's, they're by far our best PR. They go out and sell our library to the community every day. So that, I hope every trustee that's in town will be there because it's really worthwhile. You know, we did a lot of these kind of things in schools. And the main thing we want to do is just, it's not so much the food. It's recognize the people in whatever way we can, if we can get anything even in the pa, we don't have much of a paper, get things in the paper just to let people know it's National Library and that these people are appreciated. It's, it's not how much you give them to eat or things like that. It's just basically recognizing that they do a great job and we appreciate it. So anything we can do to do that, I think that's what we want to do.
Who could we have assigned that task to check in with, like the Escondido Times Advocate to request that they do some kind of article on a library? I don't know how that's normally done.
I don't either, but I can contact David Ross and ask him. He's the, he's the guy that runs it.
So we're assigning this assignment to you?
I guess. Okay. I'll try to get it done before I leave for Europe.
You can copy me on the email and I'll follow up with him if there's some back and forth.
Okay, I will, yes.
I'll go to Europe for you.
You got that in a minute, Zach?
I have a question still regarding the National Library Week, and that's more directed to Ron. Would it be possible to have like schools involved and have them organize field trips to the library?
You know, I've been out of the school business for 20 years, so I don't know exactly what's possible these days. I don't think they're doing any field trips right now until, until we get. I think you'll see schools go back to normal next year.
Yeah, September.
They're still, even though they're loosening up, they're not loosening up as fast as regular society, according to my, my daughter who's a teacher. So they're still a little bit.
Okay, because that would be another thing too, to promote library in schools. We can still do that even without the field trips being organized, so. And to encourage kids to visit the library.
I, one of the ideas that is circulated by emails, thank a librarian to see if one of us had contacts to just email the local schools and say, hey, if you want to write a thank you card for National Library Week, can you sign this to the students and drop it off that week? So I don't know if anyone could take that assignment to reach out. Carolyn, did you say there was a program that we, that you knew of that?
I think there's something called Peach, Peachjar?
Peachjar, yeah.
Peachjar? So if we contact the city, specifically the, who did we say? Teresa, Teresa, right? If we contact Teresa, who's the head of like the marketing, I think she could likely blast something to Peachjar about it. And it could be whatever they develop for, you know, National Library Week.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and then, so we could put, make that as part of our request, like not only to post on Escondido social media, but also to maybe reach out through Peachjar and say, you know, it's National Library Week, thank a librarian, or whatever we want. I think we just need to tell them what, what we envision for that.
Okay, sounds good. I can add that in my email. Is Peachjar like a?
It's like a Distro list, kind of?
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, that's what I said.
Virginia, I just thought, what about Paula?
Yeah.
Can she help us out?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
What about Paula?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll include her, or I'll reach out to her.
Okay.
I was just clarifying.
Oh.
Peachjar is just like, it's, it's just like an advertising platform that schools use to send out all of their like official flyers and notifications.
Like a newsletter.
Yeah, so like, my son is in Vista School District and like pretty much it's universal. Most school districts use it, and they just send out, once a week, they send out like all the flyers. And it just is one way, it just kind of gets them all to you at one time instead of being here and there and everywhere, and yeah. And just as an aside, we use Peachjar, we partner with the schools to use Peachjar to advertise summer reading program and some of our teen and children's events. So that's something that we use as well.
Yeah, I think, Virginia, from like an optics perspective, if we can just make it known that the, I don't want to say advertisements, but for National Library Week is coming from the board of trustees as opposed to the library itself. Okay. Cool. That's exciting.
Okay, so here's where we're at. For social media, I'll reach out to the city and include the requests to reach out to local schools. I'll also reach out to Paula Zumudio, who's the community relations, yeah, for Escondido Union High School. And then maybe she could share it with her peers at the elementary, middle schools for Escondido. And then I will, I do plan, unless someone wants to help me with this, reach out to all of the restaurants that are part of Reed Local Shop Local with a library, which is Burger Bench, Cute Cakes, Grand Tea Room, Kettle Coffee, Rock On Pizza, Shaky's Pizza, Sunnyside Kitchen, Suzie Q's, Wine and Beer, to see if they would like to sponsor breakfast or lunch for the library staff.
I'd be glad to help on that.
Thank you. Maybe we could split the list up.
Let me call the ringleader, which is Lisa McGoon from Grand Tea Room, and see what she thinks would work best, and I'll get back with you.
Okay, sounds good. And then I'm happy to coordinate because if all six of them hopefully, you know, say that they can do it, I could coordinate like who's taking lunch on this day and who's taking breakfast on another day. I just want to make sure no work is put on the library staff because we're here to support them and celebrate them. So I can coordinate that. And then I will let you know how it works out. And then John is going to follow up with the paper recognition.
Yeah.
Paper recognition. And we are all going to share as much as possible from our social media accounts, if and when Mike can create, and then we'll reshare. I think that's it.
And I can help if we need to run?
Oh, run the food. I do have that down. Run food. That's perfect. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, great.
There you go. I want to be the one that goes to Cute Cakes because they always give me free samples.
I'll meet you there.
Don't forget to show your library card. You'll save.
Okay, great. Moving on to the strategic plan update. John, did you want to share?
Okay, we, this coming Monday, the committee's getting together and we'll be analyzing the survey results and the focus group results. I just want to call out one of our committee members. Maribel Reyes of Education Compact has done a ton of work, has done an exhaustive detailed report of the survey results and also compiled all the Compacts five focus groups. That's five focus groups from the underserved community, which is really cool. And we're going to be going over all that and seeing where it leads us.
Any questions from anyone? No? Okay, Katie, would you like to give the director's report?
Yes. So just so you know, Dara is back. She is not able to make the meeting today, but she should be at the next meeting. So she's happy to be back. She came back last Tuesday, and we're all really excited to have her back. So that's wonderful. Our Adult Services Department is really focusing right now on their writing, their writers group and writing community. We have a really strong group. So in February, they hosted guest author Anders Morley, and they had 15 attendees at that meeting. The second Saturday Concert Series featuring duo Imaginalis had 42 attendees, which is pretty good. And our virtual author chat, which had young adult and fantasy authors, had 17 attendees. The first meeting of our Teen Romance Book Club, to all the books I've loved before. They discussed a book about a Korean American who was on a quest to win the heart of a girl in his class and was pretending to be a rock artist from a rock band. And it was just apparently a really quirky book, and kids really liked it. And they enjoyed Korean-themed snacks and conversation to kind of go along with the book theme. Our mini park, which is adjacent to the mural, has been completed and is beautiful. If you haven't had a chance to check it out, I recommend it. On Saturday, so the day after tomorrow, we are having the dedication ceremony at 9:30 a.m. They'll be dedicating the mural and the plaque for the Escondido Library Foundation who funded the mural. And some of our council members will be speaking, so I highly recommend you come if you can. It's at 9:30 in the morning, bright and early. It should be a relatively short dedication, just half an hour. Our Pioneer Room administrative staff and the Escondido History Center met on February 22nd to discuss the MOU partnership between the two organizations. So we kind of discussed what we see the partnership looking like, what kind of time and staff commitment there might be. And we've got a few steps that we're taking to further explore that, including each of us touring the other's facilities. So that's pretty, that's in a good place. We'll also be helping them out with, they're doing the Grape Day Festival as a fundraiser for the History Center. And we will also be doing a complimentary exhibit in the Pioneer Room to promote the history of Grape Day Festival. So that'll be really fun. Also, we did have our brand new library associate to Melissa Hare start yesterday, no, Tuesday. And she comes to us from Carlsbad Library where she's got a couple of years of experience in customer service, but she's also pursuing her master's in library science. So she's really excited to be here, and she will be lending some of her expertise as well to the Pioneer Room because she also has a master's in history. So that's pretty much what's going on right now.
Katie, when is the Grape Day Festival? Is it in May?
It is in September.
Oh, okay.
So we're getting a good head start on that because it's going to take, let me take a look. I have it written down from our meeting. It is in September. I apparently did not write the date down. Maybe they're still formalizing that. But it will be in Grape Day Park. They're trying to take it back to a more traditional historical feel instead of just having artisans, although they are trying to have more historical themed like artisans at that. And we will have a booth there as, you know, an informational outreach booth as well.
Katie, what's the status of the MOU with Palomar?
I do not have an update on that. The last I heard, when I went to the dedication, I believe that was in December, maybe January, that they, they had hoped to open, but due to the Omicron outbreak, that they had delayed opening. And I haven't heard any updates, but I'll check with Joanna.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, great. Why don't we go around then and share, you know, what you've been up to with regard to the library? Virginia, do you want to go first?
So I just stumbled upon some awesome information when I was looking, I went to the library website to look for something. And then I stumbled upon driver's license handbook and practice test. And it's so funny because I was just looking into that information for my daughter. And I was like, who knew that the library had the handbook online and she could do like six practice tests? I was, I was just like, this is awesome! So I, I kind of wanted, I mean, actually, I think I'm going to share that with Paula, who's the Escondido High School Community Relations person because that's good information for high school students to have free access to. So I was incredibly impressed with that. And then just kept going down a rabbit hole of like looking at the website stuff. And I checked out the Learning Express Library, and there's so much good stuff on there for skill building, for careers, and college prep, and computer software courses. So it's just funny when you just like go explore the website, how much information is there? It's, it's a great benefit to the community.
Well, I'm extremely excited about the fact that most of us were here when the council approved the opportunity for us to apply for the grant. I think that, I think this is just a great opportunity. I actually learned a little bit more just listening to Joanna. I was, I was very pleased. Somehow in my mind, I thought it was going to be a matching grant, but I guess because of our socioeconomics, it gets down to where our match is very, very small, so, if anything. And so I'm really excited about this because we, we've wasted so much time pushing the new library, and we've made frankly, no progress, that this gives us hope that we can bring this library up to standard. And so, so that, I thought that was a major accomplishment to get that, that passed. I also am really pleased to hear that the Pioneer Room and the Escondido Historical Society are going to get there. These are both dynamic, good organizations. They do great things in the community. But I've never really understood why they didn't work together more because they're both really doing the same thing. And so I think that's, this is going to be a really big plus for us. So I'm very happy that you put that there. And, and again, I really encourage everybody to support the volunteer luncheon because that, those volunteers are, are really important to us.
Great, I'll go next. So last Friday, I was able to tour the Pioneer Room, which I encourage everyone to do because there is just a wealth of information there. A couple of things I wanted to explain or kind of bring up. So Aspen led me through the entire room. When you walk in, the front room is very much focused on genealogy, family history. But then she took me into like the back where their vault is, which keeps, you know, all cooled and stuff like that. And there were documents there from the 1800s. And she explained to me that a lot of this stuff had been gifted to the Pioneer Room, but they haven't had the bandwidth to investigate exactly what it is they have. She brought up specifically, like they got a bunch of records from the Escondido Water District that date back like 100, 150 years. And it's really cool with that because it allows us to understand like who lived here during that time, especially during gaps in when our, our city directory wasn't able to be produced. So during World War II when there was a paper shortage, we don't know, you know, where residents lived, but if we can look at the water records, we can better map. So we fill in a lot of holes. So I would recommend everybody go take a tour because there are, I think, it's just like a treasure trove, and there's a lot that I think that the board can help with. One of the things being digitization. So we have these very old records, but we don't have a way of scanning them and then storing them for a long time. Like, there's no cloud. We've worked with external hard drives before, but those have failed. So when we think about, you know, preserving our history for the future, we might need to look at a cloud storage system. And that would be, you know, partnering likely with the city if the city has a cloud infrastructure. So that was something I, I just put in the back of my mind, maybe something to tackle as we go down the road of a new library, you know, looking at server space, server, server space and cloud infrastructure.
And I'm glad you brought that up. So next meeting will be the quarterly review of the library's trust. And I believe we're going to have the economic development person here to talk to you guys, but that's something too, Carolyn, that I've just starred so we can talk about potentially exploring the use of trust funding to pay for storage for the Pioneer Room and maybe in partnership with the Pioneer Room friends. So that's something, thank you.
Absolutely. And if the Escondido Historical Society is pursuing that as well, it could be a very good partnership there to reduce costs for the library specifically.
Katie, can I ask, is there a normal tour schedule for the Pioneer Room or is it by request only?
It's by request. The Pioneer Room is open to the public on Thursday evenings from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then it is open on Fridays and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Anyone can go in and just, you know, talk to somebody during those open hours. I will give that caveat that we have been experiencing a lot of staffing issues right now due to just some shuffling and just acts of nature and things of that, along those lines. So sometimes we are having to close the room if we don't have enough staff. What I would recommend, Virginia, is contact Aspen. She is the archivist. What I would recommend, Virginia, is contact Aspen, she is the archivist, she can give you a tour whether it's open or not. We don't have regular tours, we have in the past, much like, I think, Ron, you were talking about having students come and do tours of the library. We have all of that on the website, people can call us and make arrangements to do tours, so I highly recommend if you're interested in doing a tour to just ask Aspen and she'll, she'll set that up with you, and we've done it for students in the past as well.
And I'd just like to, one, go back, say how much of an asset I think Aspen is to our library. So she has a master's degree in history and she got it from CSU San Marcos, and she said that she's reached out to her professors there multiple times to get interns into the library to help with archival work, which not only benefits us, but benefits the student. I think she's very resourceful and I was just like so in awe of, of the room, how it's kept, all the information there, like it's definitely, I think, it could be just, it just is a, you know, treasure trove waiting to be discovered.
Yeah, let me jump in on that, Virginia and I sat down with Aspen, Aspen Hill, right? And she gave us the hour and a half short version of, of how weeding is done and it, she is a phenomenal resource, just phenomenal. And, and speaking of storage, electronic storage of, of the documents, you probably have already done this, but has somebody contacted LSNS, there must be some people that know other libraries that have had similar issues and might know of good, good suppliers, et cetera.
So the long and short of it is the way that our contract is written, who, the people that are written and is responsible for holding that property is the city.
Absolutely.
And so that's one of those things where this is a great example of how we can utilize the partnership with LSNS to get better pricing. So you'll see in other reports and things like that, but working with Greg Vogt, who's the head of IT at LSNS, and he's helped us get competitive pricing. So it's still billed to the city, but we can usually get a better discount on things because we leverage the size of the organization. Archival storage is not easy, as an archivist for four years myself, it was something I struggled with on the daily, and it's the redundancy and the necessity for excessive backups and monitoring and all kinds of things of that nature make it a little bit more challenging than your regular file storage and backups, and that is something actually at this time that Aspen and I together are exploring what vendors are out there, what kind of pricing is in existence, where can we get a support from LSNS? Where can we get support possibly as either a partnership through the History Center, through their support groups, through the trust, through the Pioneer Room Friends, through our own budgetary, so it is one of those things that we are definitely looking into and what are the needs? We need room for growth, we need people to maintain it, right? And so like there, there's a lot of things that are going into that discussion, but we are starting that discussion right now.
Okay, great, I'm not, I wasn't even thinking of their pricing power, but just the fact that they know of so many other libraries around the country and who, who may have gone through this process and we can benefit from their mistakes.
Okay, John, you have anything to share?
When we, when was it, a month or two ago, no, it was in the focus groups, there was somebody, there was two or three people that were reading off a canned script about how gloomy and dreary the library is and and someone mentioned that they spent more time over at the San Marcos branch of the county library because it was so much airier and just, just a nicer facility. So I figured, well, I've never been there, so I went over to that library and I don't think it's as old as fifteen years, maybe less than ten years old. And sure, it's bright. It has a wall of glass as we do at the back of the main collection area. But somehow they have better, duh, they have better lighting now than they did in nineteen eighty-one. And it's, it's, it's very well lit and it's bright and airy. So that's, that's something that we can take advantage of with what we're planning to do with this, this grant. You know, if we don't get the grant, we ought to make it brighter and earlier somehow.
Just real quick, happened to stop by library a couple Saturdays and just wanted to compliment the staff for running the smooth operations and they, they're doing a great job there and with and the volunteers too, and like Ron said, I reiterate that they are very important to the library and we've been doing the volunteers appreciation lunches for years. And it's just recognition for those people who put in their, their time and effort and don't get paid, and they are the ambassadors of the A D library for us. And I see we have, what, on this year, one hundred and twenty-five volunteers right now? And have, didn't we have like around one hundred and forty usually or?
Pre-COVID, I believe we had two hundred and eleven.
Yeah, there you go.
And then when we came back from COVID, we had in the very high nineties, low hundreds, and we've just seen that number creeping back up. We still have a lot of adjustment of people coming back from COVID, different levels of comfort. With the shop, they were only open a certain number of hours, now they've expanded those hours, they're looking, they're specifically asking people for the two days a week that they're not open, the later hours, so it's just every month you just see those numbers ticking up and it's, it's, it's just, it's great to see. And we have a lot of great new people, a lot of great people returning and we're just, we're so happy, we're so lucky to have all these wonderful volunteers.
It seems that most of them will come back as, as the time goes on and things get better, all right, sounds good, thank you very much.
Chauvins, who plans to be at the, it's, are they cutting a ribbon?
There was talk of an actual ribbon cutting, so I, I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, the mural dedication.
Mural dedication, I'm going, you're one? Okay, oh, great, good, okay, wonderful, well then we'll see everybody there. If there's nothing else, well, we can be together, we just can't talk about library business together. See, I'm getting it, three years in, I'm getting it. Okay, well with that, Virginia, did you have anything?
Oh, I just wanted to mention that I unfortunately am so bummed I'm going to miss the volunteer lunch, I had travel plans already and I fly back in on the thirteenth because I was making sure that I got here in time for the library board meeting, so.
Okay, great, well with that, I will adjourn, John?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say.
For lunch and I'll be in a cave somewhere, sorry.
Yeah, right. Okay, with that, I'll adjourn this meeting of the Escondido Library Board of Trustees.